All right, all set.
Thank you, Trevor. Good evening and welcome to a study session of the Mayor and Board of Trustees for the Village of Woodridge. Today is Thursday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The time is six P. M. And we call the meeting to order. If our clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Cruz.
Present.
Trustee Page.
Present.
Trustee Hendricks.
Present.
Trustee Blair.
Present.
Trustee Martinez.
Present.
Madam Mayor.
Present. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. In the first order of business, we will now pause for public comment. And I'm going to check to see if we've received any written public comments. Or do we have any members of the public who have joined us tonight via Zoom who wish to make a public comment, please?
Mayor Cunningham, members of the board, good evening. There has been no public comments submitted.
Okay, thank you so much. And has anyone joined the meeting?
There's no attendees in our weight room.
Okay, thank you again. So we will now close the public comment portion and move to board discuss discussion and deliberation on this matter. And the purpose of our village board study session this evening is to continue the board's policy discussion on vaping cigarettes and flavored tobacco products as well as kratom. And to determine whether the board wishes to pursue a village ordinance that would further regulate the sale and or possession of these types of products or substances within the Village of Woodridge. So I'd like to turn it over to Administrator Stonich and our staff, please.
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham, and the Assistant to the Village Administrator Trevor Bozak is prepared to present to you tonight. So I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Trevor.
All right, very good. Everyone should see the slide here, Village Board Study Session, April fifteenth. Can you see that?
Yes.
Great. All right, very good. So good evening, Mayor, Village Board members. Tonight, we're going to talk through two items, one of which is flavored tobacco and the other being kratom. I set up the study session tonight to cover each item independently by providing a review to where we are today on each topic and then opening it up for board discussion and direction. So a little bit of background, in May of two thousand nineteen, the village board passed an ordinance that prohibited the sale purchase age of tobacco products to those twenty-one and up. It has historically been referred to as Tobacco Twenty-One. The legal age to possess tobacco products remained at eighteen. This ordinance further defined tobacco products to include e-cigarettes, vaping devices, and substances intended to be used in such devices. The state of Illinois also raised the legal age to twenty-one in July of two thousand nineteen and similarly similarly identified tobacco to include cigarettes, chewing tobacco, e-cigarettes, and vaping devices. I quickly want to mention that while researching this topic, I found that nicotine products and tobacco products are frequently used terms. Later in the presentation, I will highlight products that are categorically nicotine versus tobacco for your reference. While these terms nicotine and tobacco may be used interchangeably during this study session, we will want to be specific in our language for any potential future ordinance. You'll see also throughout this tonight's presentation, there are many terms terms and terminology which might be a little confusing. And so I hope that if you have any questions, please ask and I'll do my best to clarify. As a result of defining these items as tobacco products, it is also required it also required our current vaping stores to become local tobacco license holders of which would attest twenty-seven. Most of the tobacco license holders sell tobacco as ancillary use while there is one primary tobacco shop and two that specialize in vaping products. In December, two thousand nineteen, federal law prohibited the sale of nicotine or tobacco products to anyone under the age of twenty-one. Then the next year in two thousand twenty, the FDA banned certain fruit and mint flavored nicotine vaping products. This ban targeted small cartridge based e-cigarettes. However, this ban only applied to cartridge or pre-filled pod devices. And as you'll see later, there are many other types of devices still available on the market. Most recently, at the end of last year, the Prevent All Cigarette Trafficking Act was amended to regulate vapor products containing nicotine in the same way combustible cigarettes are regulated. This legislation is intended to prevent online sales to minors while ensuring tax compliance. Specifically, the PACT Act amends amendment modifies the original definition of cigarette to include electronic nicotine delivery systems and and broadly defines ends to include all vaping products, liquids, components, and accessories, whether they contain nicotine or not. Based on this definition of ends, zero nicotine e-liquids, synthetic tobacco-free nicotine e-cigarettes, and CBD THC hemp vape pens among 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 other things would all appear to be captured. Additionally, the amended PAC Act prohibits the use of the United States Postal Service to deliver ends directly to consumers, and it is anticipated to go into effect around the end of this month, April of two thousand twenty-one. Further, both FedEx and UPS announced they would cease all deliveries of vapor products to consumers. So this is the end end consumer at home, not businesses or you know, retail stores. The implication the implications of this is that consumers of tobacco and nicotine products would have to visit an established retailer who is then responsible for the enforcement of age verification prior to sale. At the state level, legislation was introduced in two thousand nineteen. However, the general the General Assembly adjourned before it was voted on. At this time, it would need to be reintroduced, which has not yet happened. The state legislation specifically targeted a flavored tobacco product, flavored related tobacco product, flavored alternative nicotine product, or flavored solution or substance intended for e-cigarettes. Additionally, in September of two thousand twenty, the Chicago City Council passed an ordinance banning the sale of flavored vaping products specifically targeting flavored liquid nicotine products. So this summary slide is really kind of what we're talking about. As earlier mentioned, the FDA ban targeted certain fruit and mint, not including menthol, small cartridge based e-cigarettes. That's this first item in the top left hand corner. So row one, column one. There all other items in the top row, including nicotine sale e-juice, flavored e-juice, disposable vaping devices, flavored refillable kits, or these refillable cartridges which uses these e-juices is what I believe fits the criteria of what Chicago was referring to when they talked about flavored vaping products, specifically flavored liquid nicotine products. So while these these first items were banned from the FDA, it did not necessarily include these refillable flavored juices or these now current disposable vaping devices. The second row is more of what I would consider flavored tobacco. So fruit flavored cigars, flavored nicotine pouches, flavored chewing tobacco, flavored cigarillos, flavored pipe tobacco, or flavored hookah tobacco. So this is where I start to kind of differentiate between what is flavored nicotine versus what is flavored tobacco. So as you've heard throughout the presentation, there are many different products, definitions, and approaches as evidenced by the language from the federal government, state introduced legislation and and that which was passed via ordinance at the municipal level. Some of these bans may identify specific flavors, also including menthol. Additionally, some have enacted restrictions to also identify exemptions. So just to review at the federal, state, and local level, we're all at Tobacco Twenty-One. There has been a partial ban on flavored nicotine. At the state level, there was the proposed legislation that had those four definitions, but it's currently tabled. And then at a local level, the most local being Chicago, as there's nothing currently here in Woodridge, there's the ban on the flickered flavor flavored liquid nicotine products specifically targeting vaping products. And then, as I had mentioned, there are now these restrictions on the end user being able to purchase flavored tobacco or flavored nicotine via the mail. Postal Service will stop delivering it and FedEx and UPS is also you know, taking the same approach. So what are the options? Well, we could wait for more federal legislation. We could wait for state legislation. We could look at a local ban on the flavored liquid nicotine products via ordinance with or without exemptions or a local ban on flavored nicotine products, including cigarettes, cigars, pipe tobacco, et cetera, via ordinance with or without exemption. So or or any other combination. So really, and that's my presentation here on the flavored tobacco and flavored nicotine. I know it's a little confusing. But at this point in time, it's just an introduction as to kind of where where things are at the national state and local level while also kind of hope hopefully defining different types of products that may make it easier for you to make a decision or have a discussion.
Thank you very much, Trevor. I'd like to open it up to our board and see if there are some questions that anyone may have at this time.
And Mayor, I have a question. Anything we do with this, whether we, you know, if we do something with it, current any current establishment would be grandfathered in. So would this be just establishments going forward, you know, business licenses going forward? Or would this apply to current businesses?
I'm going to ask either Administrator Stonich or Attorney Pat for a response.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustee Blair, the answer to your question is not necessarily. Unlike zoning rights, which are vested in property owners or or tenants of of commercial property, products themselves may or may not be banned. Certainly, there's risk involved as far as inviting a challenge if you take away a a product that is significant sales generator for a particular business. But I think that depending on the nature of the ban and the scope of the ban, there may be a way that you could prevent existing businesses from selling products that are illegal. A good example, of course, is that prior to passing of Tobacco Twenty-One, establishments could sell tobacco to people who were over the age of eighteen, but not yet twenty-one. Now they cannot do so. So you can further limit in those type of in that type of vein.
Thank you.
Any
Madam Mayor.
Please, Trustee Cruz.
Trevor, I think this is for you or maybe for Attorney Pat. So the restrictions I'm purchasing by mail or online were those products that were kind of exempted from that, the refillable flavored products, things like that. Are those able to be delivered on by mail?
So far as I know, what when I've been was conducting research for this presentation, when I would land on these different retailer websites, there were banners that would state that you would need to make a purchase here shortly in order for it to still be delivered to your home. So as far as I can tell, any product that was that was in that how it was defined in the end criteria, which I I can either go back to that slide. So the way that that was defined was hold on one moment. So here this was vaping products, liquids, components, and accessories, whether they contain nicotine or not. Based on this definition, zero nicotine, a liquid synthetic tobacco-free nicotine e-cigarettes and the CBD vape pens, among other things, would would be captured in this definition of ends. So as far as I can tell, this current legislation that was signed at the end of last year, which should be going into effect here by the end of April, would really restrict the delivery of all of those types of devices to a home or end user consumer.
Okay, thank you. And then this is a question for the chief. Because I know that we just happen to have a couple of stick operations with the tobacco sellers. Do we do the same or will we do the same thing with these types of products?
Yes, Trustee Cruz, that's probably our primary proactive measures that we use to make sure that things are doing. They're doing it the right way.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If I could, Chief, how many actual vape type businesses do we currently have in Woodridge?
There's three, right, Trev? We're talking about three.
There's there's two. There's two with, I guess, the vape in the name. So we have and then we have a Royal Tobacco that's there on James. But I do believe that their primary focus is more on cigars, tobacco, and the like. The one vape store, the Ente Vapor, which was in Seven Bridges, is closed.
Okay, thank you. Any other
Oh, sorry, Mayor.
It's okay. Please go ahead.
Trevor, will you go ahead? I think it's one slide where you have all the pictures of the different products. Yes. So I want to make sure I'm understanding. We're seeking to ban the sale of all of these products on this slide within the community. That's the question before us.
Well, what I wanted to do was present the different types of definitions because it can get confusing. And so where we had originally defined vaping devices as tobacco products, I would be concerned about saying, let's ban all flavored tobacco because there are other types of uses that might fit that definition that may not be at the board's interest in banning. So that's why I just was hopeful to not be too confusing, but but kind of help separate what would be in the more of that flavored nicotine definition versus a flavored tobacco. And and so the top column or sorry, the top row is what I had more identified as the nicotine based flavored products. And this would follow more of what the city of Chicago's ordinance was versus a more comprehensive flavored tobacco, which could also then go into chewing tobacco, pipe tobacco, and the like.
So thinking about the top row, I think it was said there's two vaping businesses in the community. Are these products that they sell? I keep think I'm following up to Trustee Blair's question along the lines of is this going to affect current businesses or is just this future businesses?
I, to be honest, I haven't been there, but I would assume that these the top row would be what the would be, yeah, the primary items for sale in in the two businesses that are are highlighting vaping in our community.
I believe that's correct, Trustee Page, and if the village passes, again, the the board could pass a ban saying that exempting existing businesses, but preventing future businesses from doing this, which you're effectively doing is saying, we want no more vape stores in town because obviously, any vape store that can't sell these type of nicotine based products is not going to be in business very long. The other aspect, of course, I want to remind everyone that under the Tobacco Twenty-One laws, none of these can be sold to anyone under the age of twenty-one, whether it's a vape store, a tobacco store, or otherwise. And so I I think that answered your question.
It did. Thank you. And Mayor, can I follow up then? So if we choose to grandfather, okay, businesses that currently have that it it's not just the vaping stores. It would be your Jewel and your Walgreens and all the other, you know, some gas stations. It would be all the other establishments that sell that, too. It's not we're not just banning it. So we're really not banning it at all from the village because how many how many businesses now sell it about other than the vaping stores?
Well, Trevor, you have the number, Trev, or the number?
Oh, we have twenty-seven tobacco licenses. Now with the with the FDA regulated fillable pods, if you visit their website, you'd see that all that they can offer is a menthol flavor or a tobacco flavor. So it's not the while vaping is considered part of the I guess tobacco experience and and a gas station that was selling certain vape products. It could range from just meeting those that are within that criteria or also any of these potential other products. They they might have these disposable vaping devices, for example. I'm not sure of the twenty-seven issued licenses, what is the breakdown of of who's currently selling the flavored nicotine, so to speak.
So if we pass something like this and we banned it, the vape stores that we currently have would have, they would be out of business? Or do they sell other products? Do they?
I I guess I could would defer to Attorney Pat on this. What could be up for consideration is looking at how a percentage of sales or a primary sale versus an ancillary sale. So we know that, for example, Walgreens, while they have a tobacco license, well, wouldn't suggest that tobacco sales is their primary sales. And so maybe looking at some sort of language that could be very specific in that route. Although I'll let Attorney Pat tell me whether or not that's a way to approach it or not.
Well, there's a wide variety of ways you can approach it. You could approach it by grandfathering in existing businesses. You could approach it by doing a valuation based on a, you know, a substantial percentage of their business comes from selling these type of products, which, to your point, Trustee Blair, would in effect probably take those vape stores and put them out of business. Not, you know, not definitionally, but effectively, right, practically. Somebody who sells vape products and you're going to make vape products illegal, whatever else they're selling at their store is probably not enough to continue to keep them in business. But
That, Attorney Pat, what's our legal liability on that? Do we open ourselves up?
Well, there's the the risk of giving you the lawyer's favorite answer, Trustee Page, the answer is it depends. It depends on a wide variety of factors such that I can't necessarily give you an answer other than to say, I would expect if you pass an ordinance that effectively makes an existing business illegal or ineffective, there may be some response, a legal response to that.
Have we heard? Did we? Have we gotten any response from the vaping stores that are there that I'm sure they're aware that this is under consideration? Have we got any feedback from them?
Not at this stage, Trustee Blair. We have not. So this is meant to be just kind of an introductory discussion with the board to see if this is a direction you had. And what I would recommend, if if there is direction tonight to pursue some sort of ban, we would then I would certainly recommend a more comprehensive public comment period and do notice period to those who could be affected, right? And and I would say I would I would say that if there is an outright ban that would effectively put a couple of vaping shops out of business, we could expect probably a pretty strong response, I would think, from the industry or trade associations for for that line of business, whether that's a concern or not of the board that that, you know, that's for you to decide.
Madam Mayor.
Please, Trustee Cruz.
I this kind of reminds me of years ago when smoking in indoors was being discussed and Woodridge was considering banning it before the state ended up doing it. Ultimately, they did not. I guess, while I don't necessarily have a problem with preventing new vape stores from coming into town and grandfathering in the old ones, I don't know that doing it just on our own accomplishes a lot because you can go right next door then. And once again, you know, buy whatever it might be that you want of these products that are legal. And so I have, I I don't know that I'm ready to just do outright bans at this point personally. So that's just my opinion. And I don't know that we want to be the only town around that eliminates this. Plus, we we certainly would have, I would imagine, a response from the couple of businesses if we tried to outright ban it, their sales of it, just my opinion.
No, thank you. Thank you very much for sharing. And actually, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead. Let me show.
No, please go ahead because I was just looking for more feedback. And then I am going to ask everyone to please share kind of where you're at right now. At least so we get a little direction this evening, please.
But go ahead. Just at first is a question. So we're talking about banning. We're talking about banning to everyone of any age, right? Because minors can't buy this. Am I correct? Yeah, that would be at the direction of the board, but really, whatever direction to take, it would be the banning of a certain sale of a certain product.
But right now And and by definition, Trustee Abbott, that would be to people twenty-one and over because currently people under twenty-one cannot purchase any of these products legally.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you. So, yeah, my my thoughts on this is that, you know, if someone twenty-five years old wants to put this in their system, that's their business. I don't see where the Village of Woodridge has an interest in regulating or banning what someone can put in their system when there's no evidence that I can tell that this would be causing any harm to any other residents. I mean, I take a different position with marijuana and other substances where you could be intoxicated while driving and create a a safety hazard to others. But to me, this looks like this is just someone wanting to put a a substance into their body that can't do harm to others. So I think it's none of our business. We should just leave it alone.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with Trustee Abbott. I just feel like it's overreach. I think we did a good job regulating when we led the way with Tobacco Twenty-One. But I think we don't need to go beyond that.
Okay, thank you very much, Trustee Page.
And Madam Mayor.
Yes, Cameron.
I think I would echo those kind of sentiments. I'm definitely not a proponent of tobacco. I think it's a it's a horrible thing in in that it, you know, causes a lot of ailments. However, I don't think the village, it it seems very complicated trying to determine the difference between the different nicotine products or tobacco products. And I just think from when we initially talked about this topic, things have changed a lot society wise. And I think we have bigger problems at this point than to to focus on this at the moment. So I I think if it was becomes a bigger issue or a problem in Woodridge, then we would be advantageous to visit there.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Trustee Martinez.
I'm still slightly confused, but that shouldn't surprise any of you. Basically, I don't want to eliminate whatever we have in place. So if we have already approved the tobacco Twenty-One in existing facilities are selling to people that are over twenty-one, so be it. What I'm a little confused on is, and we're also talking about banning additional facilities, additional vaping stores and stuff like that. That's what I don't know. This topic has been a bit confusing when I read it, when I got emails and and now even listening to the discussion. Are we talking about banning product or are we talking about banning additional stores? Or both?
Yeah, we brought them both up. So they've been discussed here a little bit.
And I would I would say that from a legal standpoint, banning the sale of certain products, like I said before, may be defensible. Banning the possession and or use of an otherwise legal product is probably something that would be considered not to pass constitutional muster if if challenged in in courts.
But how how do we answer if new businesses want to come in and set up vaping and other stuff in the village?
Well, again, if if the board, if the board was so inclined, among the different things they could do, of course, they could ban all sale of any and all products related to this anywhere, including existing businesses. Another way to handle it would be to ban the establishment of future businesses that primarily sell these products. Another way to do it is to ban any future businesses, whether it's a Walgreens or CVS or a vape store or whatever, from selling these products, whether primary or ancillary to their to their business. You have a wide variety of of choices. And again, the whether that would stand up to scrutiny would largely depend on the scope of the regulation. So again, I I I think a a blanket ban certainly would be more likely to be challenged.
Well, I'm not for a blanket ban ban on existing facilities and what we have already approved. I'm not quite sold on the concept of allowing new businesses to come in and set up this tobacco activity in the village.
A a prospective ban certainly would be less likely to be challenged than a a total ban. Obviously, existing businesses Obviously, existing businesses who sell this would be really happy that you're not allowing any further competition in, in this area. I would probably see a, a challenge if it would come would probably be from someone like a, a nationwide chain who sells these as part and parcel of their normal activities, such as a Walgreens or a CVS or a nationally owned gas station type of situation. Individual small vape stores would probably just go to Darien or some other town nearby if they wanted to open up if, if they couldn't get a license here.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to ask if there's no further questions, no other comments. Administrator Stonich and Trevor, do you have enough to go ahead and move forward from all of us?
I, if I could still get the feedback from Trustee Blair and Trustee Crusack, that'd be great.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mike actually, I think, did go first.
It's my understanding, Trustee Crusack said he'd be supportive of a prospective ban, but not of a ban on existing businesses. Is that correct, Trustee Crusack?
Correct. I would be okay with limiting the number. It is, that would actually be my next question. Are we allowed, could we do this where the primary business is vaping? And just say, okay, we have two right now. That's the limit of licenses that we're giving out.
You're not making a distinct, I don't think the village currently makes a distinction, and I'll defer to Trevor on this, but I'm pretty sure the village doesn't make a current distinction on a vaping license versus a tobacco license. I believe they're all part of the same. So if you wanted to institute a ban on, or a limit on the number of licenses for, for businesses whose primary, primary business is the sale of vaping and, and/or tobacco products, other nicotine-related products, then that certainly is a way to do it. Whether we decide to create a completely separate class of license for that, you know, that, that may be a little bureaucratic, but it also may have some problems off at the, at the pass.
Okay, because other than that, I would not be in favor at this point in time of doing anything just within Woodridge as far as, along the lines of what Trustee Abbott has said.
Thank you very much. Trustee Blair?
I have a question for the chief. Are we seeing a problem with minors trying to purchase this? Have we seen, you know, an uptick in this or has this been a problem?
It actually hasn't. That's a good question, Trustee Blair. We have a handful of cases every year. The majority of our cases for possession trace back to the school, the junior high where we have, we usually have two or three a year there. And then most of our cases for possession involve other incidents, like juveniles involved in vandalism per se, and they have tobacco product with them. But there's not, we have no cases where people have been trying to buy it and we're getting called, or juveniles are trying to buy it from a store and we're getting called there. So it's pretty minimal as far as that goes.
And so if, if they do have it in their possession, there's no way to even know whether they bought it in Woodridge or not. They could have bought it somewhere else.
I mean, we, we would ask them, we'd have asked them. For the most part, a lot of it comes, has come from friends, basically.
Well, I guess Mike, you know, as much as I really don't like these products, as much as I would really like them to go away, I, I, you know, Trustee Abbott has a good point. I, I would not at all be opposed to limiting or banning any other specific vaping stores in the village. But if the rest of the board members don't have an appetite for that, then I, I guess that's fine.
Thank you very much.
So what I can do is just draft up a couple of ways to look at that as an option, whether it's with a license or otherwise. And at least get that to the board in a memo for consideration and, and see what kind of feedback we might have from there.
Trevor, I do have a question, just as a follow-up. The tobacco, Royal Tobacco, can we get an assessment of really what they are selling at their business? Just so we know.
Sure.
I, I'm, I kind of added them into the group, but I don't really know what they sell or for myself, I'd like to say that, you know, I, I know there's obviously legislation coming forward and I would like to wait for that. But I would like to look at possibly seeing, you know, should we maybe try to cap this sometime in the near future? Just a thought. So I just wanted to give that feedback. That's kind of where I'm at though.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to make sure that we've, we, we're all on the same page. What I'm hearing from the trustees is that most are not in favor of a vaping ban and there were a couple who may be interested in preventing prospective businesses
Yes.
coming in and using vaping store, vaping as their primary source of, of business, but not a majority. So I, I guess is the direction to staff, maybe draft a possible ordinance relating to limiting the number of stores and on a prospective basis and, and nothing else? And then the board can consider whether or not they even want to do that?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
It worked for me too.
Good, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'm, I'm not in favor of limiting future stores of these products.
I, I got that on yours, yeah.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the great discussion and Trevor for the presentation. Very helpful. Honestly, I, I learned a lot about, I mean, some of the supplies and things I've, I've never seen. So I did learn a lot and I appreciate that very much. It was very thorough and very helpful.
Great. Well, we have one other item for discussion tonight. So I'm going to move past flavored tobacco and on to kratom.
Yes, thank you.
Starting with the background. So kratom is a herbal supplement derived from the leaves of a tree native to Southeast Asia and is used as both a stimulant and a painkiller. Proponents of kratom state that it's a safer and less addictive alternative to opioids and has also helped with opioid addiction. As of September of 2019, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration issued a warning to consumers not to use kratom. They cited that the plant affects the same opioid brain receptors as morphine and appears to have properties that expose users to the risks of addiction, abuse, and dependence. And then in 2018, the Department of Health and Human Services rescinded a request to the Drug Enforcement Agency to classify two constituents of the botanical kratom as Schedule I Controlled Substance in the same category as heroin, allicin, and ecstasy. So at one point, HHS had identified components of kratom as potentially needing to be classified as Schedule I. And then they had rescinded that request to the DEA. So in Illinois, it is against the law for any minor under the age of 18 to purchase or possess kratom. Kratom has been banned in six states, including Wisconsin, Arkansas, Indiana, Vermont, Rhode Island, and Alabama. The majority of these states have cited its potential for addiction. There is no current legislation at the state of Illinois level. The most recent legislation was introduced in 2017 and has been tabled since 2019. In Illinois, there are currently four Illinois municipalities that have banned the sale, purchase, and possession. They include Jerseyville, Alden, Glen Carbon, and most recently, as of September 2020, Edwardsville. Staff did make a request to a neighboring police chief in a village that has a prominent kratom store. They suggested that there were no known issues within their departments surrounding kratom. When the city of Naperville approached this, they had a proposed ordinance to ban kratom. But during public comment, residents had praised its positive effects of kratom on their lives and the city council decided to modify that ordinance to restrict the sale of kratom to those 21 and up and possession to age 18 and up. So with the current state of Illinois law restricting the purchase and possession of kratom to those over 18, we have the opportunity to discuss how we want to approach it. The, with the, the village board, like staff to develop an ordinance to ban the sale of kratom outright or restrict sales to those age 21 or older. And at this point, it's just open to the board for further discussion.
So yes, thank you. I'd like to open it up to my fellow board members.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee Page.
I guess I'm confused. What is kratom? Is it a pill? Is it something you smoke? Is it, you mentioned a community having a kratom store. Is it like cannabis where there's different forms of it?
So far as I know, yeah, there's different forms. It, it does come in pill form. I believe that you can make a tea out of it at times and, and drink it. But really, it's some sort of item to ingest, which then ends up having the, that, what that opioid slash painkiller affects.
Is it in other ingredients such as, I don't know, supplements or things along those lines? Or is it literally a standalone thing?
Currently, the way that I've approached this is specifically as its own item. The, the stores are being billed as selling kratom outright. There's, or the kratom store itself. And so I don't know of other items that we would be looking to ban where this is a kind of a, an ingredient. But this would just be specific to the sale of kratom-based products.
If I could add to that, Trevor, a lot of times people will mix it with other, with other substances, whether it's bath salts or tobacco. So they'll mix it up with differently kind of things, sometimes cannabis.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, please, Trustee Blair.
Is this kratom in some of the products we just talked about?
I'm not, I'm not, in the research that I was doing for the study session, I did not find any kratom-based vaping pods. Rather, it's more of a, in my, from what I understand, more of us like in a solid form. So it's a pill that you would ingest or the tea leaves that you're going to steep to drink it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I mean, just the knee-jerk reaction to this is that, and I know we talked about this previously and, and I think every, no one was was aware of the kratom. And I think we're still not aware of kratom or, it, it seems to be more of a niche type of item that as I'm reading, just kind of cursory information, it looks like people who have done, you know, who are addicted to opioids and everything may use this to help with the withdrawals. From my perspective, it just doesn't seem like something that myself, like I'm going to go into a kratom store and, and want to dabble in using kratom. It seems like it is for maybe more to, to help get the edge off of someone who has bigger problems or addictions with opioids. So from my perspective, I don't see this as something that is currently a problem and, and, and may never be a problem.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks.
Is there any place in town that sells this product?
To be honest, I'm not sure.
If I could add to that, no, not that they're aware of in that form. And I can add to the, some of the contacts that we've had with it. We've only had two cases and they're not even recent cases. They're from 2018. And one of the cases involved recovering heroin addict and the other case involved somebody that was struggling with some mental illness that was taking kratom. A lot of people, when you, when you think about kratom, it's supposed to give you an energy boost. And a lot of people, especially younger people, would prefer to take something like Adderall or Ritalin rather than take kratom because it kind of messes with your digestive system as well, so.
Madam Mayor, I have another question.
Yes, please, Trustee Blair.
Can you overdose on kratom?
Good question.
Yeah, one of the cases we had, Trustee Blair, involved a person that was taking multiple substances, but primarily kratom and had to be brought to the hospital because of an overdose situation.
Madam Mayor?
Sorry. Go ahead, Trustee Martinez.
I just have a quick question. I'm trying to understand why all of a sudden this topic is being brought up. Is it related to the previous topic we just talked a few minutes ago? Or is it because of the referendum that was just passed? I'm trying to understand the purpose of bringing up kratom and stuff at this point.
I can address that, Trustee Martinez. Pre-pandemic, following the board's ordinance that it passed of Tobacco 21, it wasn't the news kratom, right? And particularly in Naperville, when they addressed it. And so there were a couple of board members who expressed an interest in perhaps taking this up as a further discussion. But then the pandemic hit and so that was put on hold. And so both of these items were on my list to bring back to you to see if the board had any interest in further regulating these on a local level, these products.
All right, thanks.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee Crusack.
At this point, I would almost take the last point as what we might want to look at, just to keep everything consistent with, you have to be 21 or older to buy it and 18 or older to possess it, similar to our tobacco ordinance.
Okay.
I would agree with that. If that's what we're looking for.
Trustee Martinez, you agree with that as well?
Yeah, if, looking for some kind of direction, again, this, the topic is very confusing, but if we're looking for some direction, I would agree with Trustee.
Okay, thank you so much, both of you. Anyone else?
I would agree with that also, that we can, an ordinance to ban the sale, restrict the sale.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I'm against allowing, I, I'm in favor of banning kratom. I mean, I was just, just a little while ago, looking at the Mayo Clinic website. And this is, this is a pretty strong substance. They talk about people who've used it six months or longer have withdrawal symptoms similar to opioids. They talk about nursing mothers who have kratom passed on to their, to their newborns. I mean, this is, this is pretty serious stuff. We normally, I don't think the government should interfere in what people want to do. But this is a, this is, I think this is, this is a serious substance that has a lot of negatives. And I'm sure the kratom stores wouldn't tell anybody what the negatives are. And because people are so uneducated on it, I'd be in favor of banning it just so that, just because this is a, I just think it's a really, really bad substance.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I support the age of 21 to purchase it.
Okay. Okay, at this point, if there's nothing else or does, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt anyone.
And, and just for the record, I would support 21 and older as well.
Okay, thank you. All right. So if there's nothing further, Administrator Stonich?
No, we appreciate that very much, the input and direction on both of those items. And so we'll come back to the board with, with some additional follow-up. And then, and again, on both of these items, I would recommend as we get further along that there be a public comment period and do notice on this because there can be strong opinions on both sides from the public on, on these types of matters.
And honestly, you know, there is so much information and, you know, we've gone through a lot though, and I, I do truly appreciate it. Like I said, I think the presentation was excellent. But as long as you've got enough to go ahead, we will be coming back on this again. But thank you all for sharing your insight and appreciate it very much. So, let's see here. Going to go ahead and ask for a motion, please, to adjourn the board's study session this evening.
So I'll move Trustee Crusack.
Thank you, Trustee Crusack, in a second, please.
I can, Trustee Martinez.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez. All those in favor, please sign aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. It is 6:50 PM. Thank you again, and we'll see everyone at 7:00 PM for our regular board meeting. Thank you.